One nation, one people, one flag, in the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
Mr. Ryan?
Present.
Mr. Paredes?
Present.
Mrs. McHugh?
Present.
Mr. Cook?
We had a family emergency, so.
Mrs. Florka?
Present.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Here.
Mrs. Bobbs?
Present.
Okay, adoption or amendment of agenda?
Since there's no amendments, I'll make a motion to adopt the agendas presented. Oh, we do have conference, sorry, I asked you what I didn't have to do.
Under new business.
Okay.
I'd like to have each shifted down to F.
Okay.
And then we added, um, reservation.
I will make a motion to let out the agendas.
Support.
Motion by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mrs. Florka. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda.
Uh, under consent agenda, I'm approving the minutes from the special meeting and the close session minutes of special meeting of July 15th through 29th as presented. Also approving general fund bills in the amount of $232,672.72 and AP payroll checks in the amount of $15,406.95 for a total of $248,079.67 with checks numbered 64196 through 64254 and ACH transfers in the amount of $460,955.39 for a total of $709,35.6 with no checks voided and additional bills in the amount of $16,380, yes, $283.89 with checks numbered 64255 through 64265 and no che- checks avoided. And also under personnel, we'll be going over the resignations for Howard Keller, Nicole Carrington, Rich Gallagher, Mark Kringle, and the hiring of Tricia Gimford, Adam Virsion, agree hire of Wendy Fisher, and the coaches recommendations for fall 2019.
You have a motion by Mrs. Florka, supported by Mrs. O'Connor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we're on to reports. We have a PSI report. I don't know if everybody remembers this one, but they're like this. Michael's here with us today.
Hey, guys. I'm Michael from Performance Services. So, real quick, uh, I haven't seen you since we approved the project. So, we finished up the project in October. Um, these are the energy conservation measures. We have here some ECMs a lot, retrofitted lighting, LEDs, and occupancy sensors over here in the junior and senior high school. We also upgraded the emergency backup lighting with, you know, used to have a battery pack that didn't work anymore, so we got you back up the code on that. With new batteries, new emergency lights over here at the high school, we extended the vestibule, as you all see up there. We also redid some of the heating zone, de-stratified the front. But really, the biggest work was that security vestibule that you have up front. Over at the elementary school, same thing with the light, retrofit the existing light fixtures with LEDs and oc sensors. We also over there were able to put in a building automation system, so a new building control system. You don't have a lot to control over there, but at least barely get our hands on it. The big work was the boiler replacement with the high efficiency variable, freak drive, especially to save money on the hot water drives going forward. Exterior wall and insulation covering on the back, I guess, did you look at that? It's good.
Good.
Replacing the bleachers, which, you know, thank you Brad for your understanding, it's quite a lot of work. Lighting ritual fits at the bus garage and at the end. Remember when I told you that if we made a mistake or if something was wrong during construction, we would pay for it? Here's all the stuff we paid for. So, we made a few mistakes. And someone were coming to construction. The elements, this one was shocking to us. When we put the new high efficiency boiler in, it wasn't able to draw enough gas from the existing gas line. And so, in a normal construction project, that would've been your fault, not the contractors. In our world, we should've, you know, triple calculated that and double checked it. It's honestly not something you can usually find out until you do it. The gas company even came out and checked the pressure, the line pressure was fine, but long story short, we couldn't make the boiler run on the old gas line. So, we had to put in a new gas line, that was about $5800 straight cost. Uh, the bleachers turned out to be a huge challenge. Uh, so originally, when the bleachers were installed, they didn't meet the code requirements, so obviously the subcontractor redid the bleachers to meet code requirement and had his own work. It cost us a little bit, you know, architectural engineering, project management. The real work came in leveling the floor. We had to do a lot of extra work on leveling the floor. Even after the bleachers was installed, there was a, I didn't know how to describe the problem, uplifting and cracking. So, we had that fixed and repaired. And this is something we'll continue to monitor. Should anything go wrong in the next year, we'll still come back and fix it. So, we fixed all these issues at our cause. We were able to, because we had extra money left over in the contingency from the crack, the program early, we were able to do a security entrance at the elementary also with no additional cost. And we did an additional pushback. It seems so, but you know, the stuff adds up. Overall, we spent about another nine plus K in project management time. We also used this to train one of our project managers, so that was helpful for us. But you know, the good part was in a normal job, this number probably would've been closer to 50. You would've gotten crushed. We're pretty proud of that. We're not proud to make from the states, but we're proud of fixing them. Going on, so now we're, we finished, like I said, major construction in October. So, now we're moving into, starting this October, is year one of us measuring you guys for the next three years to ensure that you get the savings that we do. So, we're still at what's called our construction savings, but the elementary is right on track. So, we estimate the elementary would save 26 percent, is saving right on 26 percent. The admin building is actually at 190 percent of what we estimated. I don't know what you guys are doing over there, but we're good. The bus garage is dead on. The high school is short. The high school's coming around 18 or 20. We don't have all the utility data. Um, we've had some trouble with your utility getting all that. It's supposed to be 26, so we've got until October to fix this. And here's what we're gonna do to fix it. We need to upgrade the control system over here. So, what we're gonna do, the control logs on your current control system show that the mechanical equipment is running on weekends from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So, seven days a week, even on holidays, it's running. So, we gotta, we gotta get in there and do some what's called a setback to turn it down a little bit. The new actual, the new high school bills, they only gave us a summary, so we didn't get all your bills. We do know you had a 4% price increase on it, and it was like, was it for a beat? So, you know, it's nominal, but it adds up. We think they might've hit you guys with a power factor. This is something you gotta watch on the utilities, so we're getting copies of all the monthly utility bills to double check that. Um, and then, like I said, to solve this, we'll get the data loggers, we'll get the setback, we'll figure out where this bad usage is coming from, and we'll keep looking at this high school. So, you have an old, old high school system, control system for the building here. The biggest problem with it is you guys can't access it yourself, you had to go through this third party, you're still using him to access it, even then it's still kind of bulky and slow to see if what's going on is being done. So, we're gonna have to get up on this pretty hard. Um, it's not that far off, but all we did over here really was lighting, so it's practically impossible to miss the, I mean, the lights aren't gonna miss the number. The lights are already saving what they're supposed to, so somewhere in the last year, extra usage came in. Mostly, we think it's the setbacks got changed. Your previous, um, facility director, he was doing a lot of stuff manually. He'd been here, I don't know, a long time. He was very smart. He did a lot of stuff manually, and very often when people retire, they just don't pass that on to the next guy. You know, they tell the next guy, do this, do that, and nothing's really broken down. So, we'll, we'll figure this out there heavily, get you corrected up, and we should be good for year one savings. I'll come back, so we'll be from October, I'll come back six months, it'll put me on the schedule in late January, early February. We'll come back and see how we're doing in those first six months. Any questions?
You're talking percentage, can you put a dollar figure on that per seat?
You know, I apologize, we just ran these numbers, you know, real quick last week. Um, they, we have a group down that does it corporate, I mean, dollar wise. I don't know, I can get it to Brad, maybe mail it to him. The, the biggest problem though is, is with us too, we were going off these summaries, and I just discovered that like two days ago, like you gotta have the actual bill. The bill shows you, like I said, that bill rate number. Never trust a utility. Sometimes they change your bill rates without telling you, and they charge you these power factors without telling you. Sometimes they'll double bill you because you were late, you know, one month. It's, you gotta be really careful with it. So, we need to see the actual bills, make sure nothing weird happened. It's not that bad of a percentage. I mean, I'll start to get nervous if, if, you know, if I see this number in November, we'll certainly let Brad know. We'll be watching it pretty close every month. Any questions? Final things? You guys are doing almost easy. It was a good project though, and I hope you enjoyed the light, because that's, that was the biggest notice, one of the things. So, thanks, guys.
Thanks. Relax, Mr. Okie.
Hello, I'm glad you joined. Joined this summer, not a lot going on right now, obviously. Um, we do have a bass team, I should talk to Coach Dave, had two, two contests so far, tournaments, I should say, and, you know. Had some rough spots, but we've got their defensive, their state championship coming up in August, so we're excited for that. Hopefully we'll have good news from that. Rest of it, you know, as you know, all sports are down. Um, we do have weight room, girls volleyball, girls softball, football, basketball, have all taken turns at the weight room. We've had good numbers of kids showing up to that, so that's exciting. And, uh, we're approaching our dead, our dead season, which will be about two weeks, that everybody will shut, be shut down from August 1st to the 12th. We won't do anything, July 29th, 20th, and 30th, uh, football's planned for the last 15, 15 days. They're gonna use, utilize the amount of football field, and one night they're gonna do like a little scrimmage, we're trying to be alumni, they're having a little scrimmage or something like that with them, and a little seven on sevens, which will be exciting, if somebody's ready to play again. And, um, other than that, the numbers have been good for softball, I'm sorry, for volleyball. Football, numbers are good, and soccer, you know, we're going for three feet in soccer, so we've got some exciting things that we're looking forward to this fall. Uh, you see cheerleaders out here working, they've got tremendous numbers, you know, just for sideline cheer. So, um, this Wednesday, we're actually doing a promotion, met with Eric, Eric, and, and we're going to do a promotion of all Memphis athletes, athletics. We're gonna have coaches, players all show up, we're gonna have Hall of Fame members show up, and we're gonna do like a commercial promo, uh, we got the band included, we're gonna have Droid take a picture of our athletic facilities inside and out, trophy case, the Hall of Fame, uh, college bound athletes, interview some of the kids, interview some of the coaches, try to get more out there to really show just how many great things have happened here and are happening here. Uh, it seems like everybody's excited about it. So, from the trap teams, the bass team, to football, to basketball, they're all gonna be represented. All the head coaches are, you're neither but one, he's on vacation, we're actually gonna be able to tape them then on Monday when he gets back and edit it. So, hopefully it'll come out pretty good. Kind of a takeoff from Stevie Pork, but just promote everybody, and everybody know what we have going on out there, just how successful we will have. So, other than that, um, schedules are done, everything looks good, we're good to go.
Did you hear it? Has the, has the gym getting shut down for resurfacing this? The fifth?
August 5th, yeah.
Just add her. All right. Principals.
All right. Um, my teachers and myself had a great time at that my ELA training that we went to in Grand Rapids. The entire training was based around the writing unit implementation. It was very informative for us. Some of it we already knew, but it was nice to know that we're on the right track, and then we had some steps for going forward. They had a nice admin model this time just for principals, and it gave me a lot of tools for observing and monitoring implementation, and just quick checks with the teachers. We did order a new handwriting series, it's been a while since we had an actual handwriting curriculum, so the kindergarten team and I sat down and looked over some books, and we had some money from that, switching to the basic unit, so we used that to purchase handwriting curriculum for kindergarten and first grade. Um, and then depending on how that implementation works will look to maybe do that in the second grade as well. What else? We, Matt and I sat in with and Brad, interviews today for new social worker, we had some promising candidates. And that's about it. We're ordering books, and, um, Mr. Kuja, Mr. Cooney, redid the floors in the daycare area, and Trish can attest, they look lovely. Um, I came in and visited one day, and it was one of those hot, hot days, and they were sweating, and I felt so bad for them, they did really great work, so we're gonna change-
But she didn't offer to help.
I, I did offer to give them water, or a fan, and they did say they could do the officer service, they were fine. But it looks great, so if you get a chance, you should stop in and see that. And we're looking forward to, um, August, I've been working a lot with the new teacher, Miss Gimford, on curriculum, and she's been in a lot, so I'm excited for what she'll bring to the team. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Um, just a couple of notes from high school, it's been quiet around here too, I mean, there's some live cleaning and band camp started today, so the noise, I was gonna be, the quiet ended today, so we banned, uh, but they were actually, all the kids were pretty excited about band camp. I actually got in here around, well, I actually got, came over here around 12, so we were interviewing first, but the kids were having lunch, it was packed down there, I was excited, they were performing all over the school, the gym, and the band room outside, library in here, they were set up over there for a long time, gym over there, so it's been really, uh, exciting day for them, so they'll be doing that all week, band camp. We, uh, last week, um, Ms. Gackey, Sir Corbett, myself interviewed some candidates for special like, opening, open special position, and they're open 80% part-time at the school, and we have two candidates that we are looking forward to. They'll probably come to the meeting for a second, August meeting. Very excited. They did get a call today, we might have to, yeah, but we might have a position opening soon. Hopefully, you know, I don't know if there are, there's not a lot of our teachers, so they'll hopefully about to go rough this year. Uh, also, last week, uh, the school-wide PBIS team met, it's our first time school-wise, so the high school is now implementing PBIS next year. Uh, we met in here, actually, no, it was in the office, uh, staff lounge, um, on Thursday last week, grade meeting, um, met for about two and a half hours, had some lunch, talked about our program as a whole in the school, and how it would look at the high school, and how it would look in the junior high, we kind of planned out some dates and things, and so we have a, a pretty big list of things to do. We'll meet again the 5th, I believe, of August, uh, to kind of see where we're at, we've got a lot of deadlines, we're gonna meet by then, and then, also, that means Jose will be with Arista, of course, consulting for us, and then we hope to be ready for school if we get a roll up. And that'll include a, um, the first week of school, that Friday will include a field day type thing for everyone, including the high school. I don't wanna give away too much, but looking at the possibilities of volleyball tournament or, um, dodgeball and volleyball for the high school, and then the junior high, who are kickball pickup. So, a lot of cool stuff with that. And then, um, all the other really things exciting, Sir Corbett and I have worked on that, and still, um, and also the little blockout over here, we got our dirt, uh, the fact, the fact that planting boxes are all filled up with dirt and ready for plants. Um, I'll take suggestions as to what will grow from now until fall, I don't know, people work there, maybe mowers, I don't know. Um, and next up is to get the, some flowers here in, um, for next year, and get them to kind of roll. So, we're looking forward to planting vegetables next, in the spring. We might have it already, we're still waiting on the wood chips, I keep calling in the nasty tree, and, um, keeping the voice on, I keep doing the messages, so hopefully we'll get those really.
All right, Chad? All right, thank you. Business Director.
All right. Um, well, first, just to kind of give everybody a sense of where I'm at in my employment here. Um, I've now been here for just over two months. I know a lot of us are missing your last meeting, but currently, I'm continuing to review and analyze the general ledger accounts, kind of dig into them deeper to more familiarize myself with what's going on here at the school. I think I've made a lot of progress in the last two months. Now have all activity up to date through June 30th, um, including the time that there was the gap, and, and nobody was in this position, so I feel a lot more comfortable than I was last time when I sat here six days into my employment, and-
We got it done.
Um, still, also familiarizing myself with the active grants and the programs that the, the school's involved in, to make sure that I'm reading the deadlines that are out there, and making sure that things aren't being missed. Um, so that's just kind of a quick update of where I'm at. Um, just some of the highlights of things that I've worked on in the past month since the last board meeting. Um, I did meet with Sandy Pavlo and reviewed GSRP budget for the upcoming grant year. Um, that budget will be due sometime, uh, late September. Um, also met with Brad to review the wage increases that were discussed at the last board meeting. Quarterly GSRP grant draw requests, um, both the, the regular GSRP grant and the GSRP transportation grant, the third quarter, both of those requests have been submitted. Um, the quarterly idea flow-through grant was submitted, as well as the idea preschool grant. Um, I was able to attend a, um, Setseg golf outing with our Setseg rep, and was able to get to know him and kind of talk shop a little bit, so that was, that was a nice, nice, uh, nice perk there.
You scored.
Uh, I don't wanna discuss that. I did better than the other guy in earth three, so that, and I left Scott, wait, I let the ref in, so we'll give the decent. Um, some of the things upcoming, right now presently, I'm working on the audit, auditors are coming out starting this Monday, or this coming Monday, so they'll be here next week. Uh, plan is to be here four days, and then Fridays as needed. Um, so just working on the audit work papers, making sure that everything's up. Um, the administrative outreach program for the board, that's gonna be due from 9th, so we'll have that completed. And then, uh, just kind of an FYI property tax payments, we should start seeing them, start rolling in like mid, mid-August, we'll start seeing those come through. Um, other than that, just continuing to monitor activity, um, kind of diving into the accounts, and seeing where adjustments need to be made on the First Amendment budget, and just kind of go in from there. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. All right. Any other reports? Okay, audience participation. Looking for audience participation. Find the correspondence. Just some true school odd notes, just some highlights, talking there about the GSA, G A S A for accounting standards compliance, so. And then, uh, we talked about the budget being posted for the current fiscal year, and there's two virtual displays that we have to have, so.
That'll be when we get our audit, to get that pie graph, all that, that goes in with the approved, um, projected budget is out, up on the side already.
Does that get posted on the website?
Yes, yes.
Uh, final nine investigations, talk about how to complete those, and then teacher emails there too. Anybody else have anything else over there?
I thought I took it on the note, which I never-
Oh, I highlighted the, um, new code of educational ethics that applies to licensed educators, and then I think I made a reference to-
That's something we'll share with our staff at the orientation in August.
All right, and then we had the Memphis Girl Scout Juniors embrace recycling article in the paper. Got the bronze award for that, it's a really big achievement, collecting all that plastic material for the bench.
If you haven't seen it, it's right outside of central office here, on the, the little loop there, and on the path walking over, it gets a couple of trees, the bench, um, it's very nice, I've used it several times, it's a nice spot that we had, just to sit up there and relax for a few minutes.
Should I pick a girl?
Yes, that, so those trees are growing, they're real nice. Shaky spot.
Okay, then we're on to old business. First up, we have the administrative contracts for Brad Goodney, for Corbett, for Sandy Pavlo for 1920.
If you wanna make a motion first, if you want me to talk a little bit, you know, always, it kind of impacts all of them, the, all the motions we made last time referred to me meeting with Adam to give an update of where it stood financially and what it did, so, I don't know if that's the best way to do it or not.
I'll make a motion to approve the administrative contracts for 2019-20 as presented.
Support.
Should I, Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mrs. Florka. Discussion?
So, you see, Adam and I did sit down, go through the, uh, the impact, um, to make sure that we were on track, we had a discussion at our last meeting. Um, and you'll see at the, the bottom there, he put on all the increases that were discussed, and it comes out and has an impact for about .80 percent on the fund balance. Um, there was, I don't know if that's gonna fall through there. Where do we have, oh, Mark, you're being there hourly. Um, in my discussion with the different administration involved there, I did talk with Mr. Okie, and, um, something in his contract that he was looking for is possibly to hit the 5% also. So, the 20%, or, I'm sorry, the 20,000 to make him full-time, so it'd be up to 40, and then a 5% increase on that along with the other administration, and then going from a single subscriber to full family insurance. Um, so with those two changes, you go up to, uh, .97 percent to the fund balance, uh, of impact, so we'd be going down from a 13,63 to, um, just under, I'm sorry, let's take that, it's at a 13,63 with all the changes, with those additional, it takes down to 13.45.
So, that's not in there?
That is not in there, that was something after Adam and I sat down, that Mr. Okie and I just had that discussion. The 5% is a $2,000 increase, and going from single to full family is a cost of $11,662.
Is that the same as the, is that how the other administrative positions are?
We have, um, of the ones listed, yes, we have three employees, full-time employees in the district that do not receive full-time, they're only seeing single, Laura Mickelson-
Full family.
I'm sorry, single person instead of full family, correct?
By their choice, or we don't offer it?
That's, we offer their position as just a single subscriber.
Okay, is that Laura and Jason?
Sandy Morgen, we're checking.
They elected, do they have a single?
They, that's what we offer with them.
How much is the cost of it?
Uh, single is, uh, 6,600 roughly, and full family is 18,000.
That was 11,662.
The, yes, the impact to us would be 11,662.
And the full family is what he had on his original contract when he-
Yes, for-
That's what he asked for, Green State.
Do you have a comparison still?
By their choice or we don't offer it?
That's we offer their position as just a single subscriber.
Okay, is that Laura?
Sandy Morgan.
They elected, do they have a single?
They, that's what we offer with them.
How much is the cost line?
Single is 6,600 roughly, and full family is 18,000.
That was 11,662.
Yes, the impact to us would be $11,662.
And the full family is what he had on his original contract when he...
Yes, for...
That's what he asked for in state.
Do you have a comparison still?
You want to lie to us in the space?
Put your hand.
And these will just be the salary only, they won't include...
It does not show anything with benefits, I do not have the information from them.
The 13.45 is with full family?
I'm sorry, say it again. Yeah, oh, taking it down to, yes, 13.45 would be with the full family.
And the 5%?
And the, yes, yeah, that is correct.
And does the coverage last through the term of the contract?
Yes, correct.
A year for him? Three years?
Yeah, everybody July 1st through June 30th.
A lot of the part times, who else gets the full time? Everybody else would be.
Most schools in our size are usually in combined position, typically it's an AP/AT.
Any further discussion?
Just that can we mirror this process for next year when it comes up, so we're not spending a board meeting looking for numbers?
Yeah. And then I would just like to expand on that. I'd like to do it 90 days prior to expiration of the contract, so we have time to work through it.
Absolutely.
Because at that point, the contracts are automatically renewed.
Yeah, that's correct.
So we should start this much, much sooner.
I agree.
Any further discussion? So this isn't, this isn't built into the contract that we have on file?
The one that we talked about in our last meeting did not show that. It was only upping the salary from 20 to 40, that was the only change. Set this delay.
It's a large increase. That increase takes up 25% of what we're getting everybody. It's a, I agree, good to hear that, or sooner, so...
I'm okay with the full family benefits because that's what was on his original contract, and that's what he was asking for back when we talked extensively about that the last board meeting, was having his original contract back, which was a full benefits. That's what my understanding was that he did have and that he was getting again was a full family benefits, because I just assumed a lot of full-time employees have full family benefits, is my assumption.
Yeah, we just don't, we don't offer it for everybody in the district, so...
Is he an administration role, considered administration by Director?
Yeah.
Are any administrators that are full-time?
Laura would be also our director, so that would kind of be the same.
So besides Laura, she'd be the only one out of three?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we open up for discussion at a future board, or does that have to be approved now for the contract? So the motion on the table is to approve the administrative contracts as they are written in the file. We have motion by Ms. McHugh, supported by Mrs. Florka. Do you want to amend?
Yeah, I think we should probably amend that. Or we could pull Drake out and then just have it as a separate motion, but we could do that that way too, and that way the others are...
So if we amend it, we're giving them the five and the full one?
Right. So we could do whatever we, you know, whatever, we could either amend it or we could pull them out, have it as a separate motion.
And I was not on Amanda's page, I knew he was asking for full time. I did not assume we were doing the original contract. So this is a big hit and a big surprise, so I don't know how comfortable I am just blanket approving what we, at face value, what we talked about before, but I don't know, I need a moment.
Let's get it out so they can discuss it. I guess I can turn around, test the motion.
Continue to discuss.
That's fine, we're just continuing the discussion, that's fine.
I totally understand the importance of it and I can appreciate the need for it. Embarring even the other situations, I mean, that wasn't, again, I guess the timeliness of 90 days where maybe that discussion would have been had and it could have been brought to the table while we were talking. We did factor in for the 5%, we would have had that opportunity to do that there. So I mean, that's something, and then the full-time benefits is up to the down a bit. When we were worried about doing what we were doing contained there, but that's my take.
What's the timing of the contracts that needed to be renewed? So I'm asking because I want to understand when the finance meeting, right, to talk about these, then we had a very extensive number crunching session during a regular board meeting where the math was reinstating a full-time. So at no point was the negotiation of 5% or full family coverage discussed during that time. So when would that be expected, that negotiation aspect be expected from the employee, or when are we expected to tender that off for negotiation?
Well, this is the first year we've kind of done it this way. Usually it's the finance committee that comes out with some, here's what our recommendations are, and we discuss the recommendation to look in there. So that's when I would have the conversation with the employees, here's what we're looking, here's what we're doing. So if we're talking 90 days, you know, you're going to look at it in March and have that conversation with an employee in March, and hopefully have everything done, even have it settled by April if everything went well in March. So just kind of the way we changed the process this year, we know we financed that early, but the...
But that was ineffective, right? I'm sorry to say that finance meeting. Because that's why this became a whole working project.
That's what I'm trying to understand why I'm here now.
The board wanted to have a discussion with everybody instead of just the finance committee. And in the past, it's been the finance committee goes through, crunches the numbers, and then brings the recommendation to the board for a full discussion on, okay, we looked at the comparables, we looked at the impact, and this year it changed a little bit. So we went and did that crunching and everything at a board meeting, which delayed us kind of a month.
I know we did talk about the 5% increase last one, but I know it was mentioned several times that he was asking for the original contract. It doesn't matter when we were making a decision based on numbers that we were forced to do that night because it didn't get done in the finance meeting, and our decisions were made on a full-time position, not a full-time with 5% increase and insurance. So that would have changed, I think, how we processed it that evening. And now we're under a time crunch and working behind it because things didn't happen as they were. So I'm not really understanding the benefit of us working through this as a board when the numbers are the numbers and then we have to decide what's the best decision.
And it wasn't just the 5% either, it was the comparables we're really looking at. We had one administrator get nixed from the whole thing because they weren't in the comparable zone, and I'm looking at comparables from Marlette, where there are 25,000 part-time, which means probably no benefits.
I'd assume so.
Brown City, part-time, 27,000. So we're going 40% more than the comparables on there.
Well, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Those comparables are not accurate. Those comparables on Brown City is retiree of 30-some years. So he's a retired gentleman who gets paid his retirement through the school. If you want comparables, you look at Harvard Beach, you just hired, they're brand-new athletic director, no, zero, zero experience, at $39,000. That's what he got. That's a fact. Carroll High School just hired a kid out of school, 22-years-old, at $60,000. Those are the comparables. Marlette has had eight A.D.s in the last six years. That is a gentleman that they hired who owns the business behind the school. I mean, you know, that's their business. Before that, it was principal, assistant principal, janitors, and just started GL hiring new. I do not have those comparables. Sandusky is a retired. Richmond's A.D. is not, and they're a bigger school. But, I mean, you're looking at Carroll, who's our size, in our league, first-year E.D. I think I was very clear in the email and the conversations, the 5% I did say to Mr. Goodmeat the other day, because I didn't know about the 5% beforehand, that to me is negotiable.
The 5% was on that same board meeting, we were all present, and we all agreed on 100% increase in pay. And today it came and said we want 105 plus another 25% connectedly.
Well, but the original, what I said was my original contract. That's not negotiable. I put in the work for two years, gone over my odds, had two, I think, very good evaluations, continuing to move forward with the program. The 5% to me is negotiable, because I didn't have, I really didn't have a chance to speak on that 5% before that. But the benefits, I'm not trying to elaborate your answer, it's not my fault, you know, we're doing this now. But I've been very clear that, you know, with all due respect to everyone, and I'm not asking for any more than I did receive before, and whatever administrator is getting here full-time.
Not every, not every administrator is getting an extra 5%.
That part, sure, I said that part is negotiable. The benefits is not negotiable. I mean, that was part of my original contract, the 5%, okay? I can give you 100 reasons why I think I deserve it, but that part is because I felt, you know, my evaluation, talking with Mr. Goodman, my evaluation last year with Mr. Kraft, I thought, you know, could warrant that. I understand the negotiation of that, I do. The benefits is consistent with, you know, everybody else.
And I do understand that, but we are still maintaining a budget, and we did bring it from part-time to full-time. Understand, original, you might have used the word original, and I'm sure you did, and that's what your intention was, those numbers did not come up, and we were struggling, and we did keep someone status quo, and we had some strong discussions about length of contracts, and we tried to individualize, so I don't feel comfortable with this blanket. That was, the word original was used, so that matches the numbers. I mean, we were talking those numbers. And I believe that you've put in the work and all, it isn't a personal thing, it's a budget thing. We're budget-driven, and that whole previous meeting was based on a struggle with a 5% increase for employees. 11,000 hit is pretty big.
Six.
And there's nobody else going in for that stipend position, correct?
Correct. That figure is in the spreadsheet right here.
Yeah. So him going full-time, we do save the $6,000 still for the stipend?
Yeah, and that's included in there, yes.
How tight are we on our numbers? We're not, would it come in next week? Should we, should we be like, pretty close, you think?
That's obviously the goal.
Yeah, I know. Always, and it's like, then sometimes, woo, you know?
Yeah.
So...
I would like to say yes.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I feel confident that we should be pretty close.
Okay.
You're talking to Mr.?
Yeah.
So you have 20...
20 plus 11, 662.
27, that's correct.
the benefits based on the original contract, so...
I guess our numbers just didn't show it. We just, we weren't thinking on that, I guess. We were thinking the 40 versus the 20, he never did put the...
All conditions salary-based, yes.
Yeah, and we didn't even, we should have thought to bring that up, because that should have been something that came up in there.
If I could just add that 11,000 for the benefits, that would, you know, when we're talking fund balance, that's about .1% effect on that. Putting the perspective of the rest of the changes.
Even with the 13.45, we realize that, I mean, we've done all of these salary adjustments and raises and everything, and we haven't quite gone one full point, you know, lower. So we are, we went from 1442 to 1345, so we haven't... But everything chisels away at it, too.
Well, I propose so that we can get moving forward here, that I propose that if you wish to make an amendment to include the changes, and then we can vote on it.
Which, which changes?
Well, she proposes to motion, but if she wants to include the changes, we can vote on it, and if it doesn't go through, then we can take another vote on the changes, or we can break that out separately and vote on it separately. So let's do that, let's remove and vote on, vote on those, and then someone can make a motion for the contract.
Okay, so I will amend my motion to just remove Drake for a separate motion on that, and to approve the administrative contracts for 2019-20 for Brad Goodmeat, Keith Corbett, Crack Kujia, Sandy Pavlo, and we're removing Brad for this, just for this motion.
Support.
We have a motion by Ms. McHugh, supported by Mrs. Florka, to approve the administrative Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mrs. Florka, to approve the administrative contract for nineteen, two thousand nineteen, twenty, as presented for Mr. Goodman, Mr. Corbett, Mr. Kujia, St. Pamela. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion's carried. So do we have a motion, or a motion, A dot one, for Mr. Oak?
I'll make a motion, approve, approve Drake's contract with, at the salary we mentioned, return him to full-time. Also include the, that full family benefit.
Support. Work equity, too.
That's adequate.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Parry, supported by Mrs. Babson.
So full-time only, not five percent?
Not the five percent.
Any discussion? So, I'm going to clarify, the motion that we have on the table is for Mr. Oak's contract for full-time at forty thousand with full-family benefits for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Drake, multiple, multiple people thought that, since you thought it, they thought it. It, it's still a surprise, and it hurts to, and it's not your fault, you had that in. But the additional five percent on top of it, that's a, that was clearly not on the table, when we discussed last week, or the last meeting.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
You know, but, but I, I understand there was that feeling, you had, had it in the original, well, we did, we should have shown it in finance.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you. Yeah, I said he was an opinion about his salary.
They may have to have polish for it.
Can I, I know it's not audience participation, but can I ask a quick question? It, it's just in relation to the contract and monetary donation I had since last year for Mr. Oak?
I prefer we discuss it after.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, let's move on to item B, amendment to contracts to include the snow day language.
I'll make a motion to approve the administrative contracts for two thousand nineteen, twenty, as presented. I'll make a motion to approve central office contracts for twenty nineteen, twenty, as presented.
I think it's one for that.
Where's he saying?
Item D.
I missed the line. Okay, the line's not there, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. The amendment to the contracts to include snow day language for Matt Grabus, whose name is... Or Nicholson, Frischrothson, and H. Support.
Motion by Mrs. O'Connor, supported by Mrs. Florka. Any discussion?
Just clarify language, just so we all are on the same page, that if we go over those six snow days, what the expectation is. Um, there was a language, we brought three different options to the board, uh, back early June, so this is that language, putting into those contracts. So just so they're approved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, central office contracts for Laura Heil, Sandra Fowler, Brian Durst, and Berger for two thousand nineteen, twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve the central office contracts for twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty, for Laura Heil, Sandra Fowler, Brian Durst, and Berger, as presented.
Support.
Motion by Mrs. Florka, supported by Mr. Parry. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D, hourly contracts, two thousand nineteen, twenty, for the instructional aides, non-instructional aides, preschool teacher, and Mrs. Marchand.
I'll make a motion, approve the hourly contracts for instructional aides, non-instructional aides, preschool teacher, and we got a merchant.
Motion by Mr. Parry, supported by Mrs. O'Connor. Any discussion?
The, the hourly employee is the one that he did not, um, have included in there, is Mr. Pringle. He's kind of a unique situation, he works for the maintenance firm, but he is still employed by Memphis. Um, he's not employed above the firm. So he would not be one that is included in that, but it is somebody that we should, we could consider for the same. Uh, he's currently making ten twenty-five, the five percent will take him up to ten seventy-six. Cost of the district for the year, um, would be about fourteen hundred dollars.
And he's the only one that hasn't that included in that?
Yes, based on Memphis employee in that group, as an hourly Memphis employee. When we were looking at it, we were thinking of all maintenance employees, so there's probably a problem that they're not.
I have to amend my motion, include Mr. Pringle in the hourly contract. Is it group?
Mrs. O'Connor, it's supported.
I vote support.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Parry, supported by Mrs. O'Connor, on the amended motion to include Mr. Pringle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E is the GSRP associate teacher under Grant.
This would not be a motion at this time, we would hope to have the GSRP budget teacher, who do get a small increase. Basically, they kind of do the same thing that the state does, we'll get a foundation allowance increase. We have not seen that yet, recently presented that for us, so when that comes in, we'll have to bring that contract back.
Oh, discussion.
Next up, we have NOA policies fourteen twenty-two and forty-one twenty-two, the nondiscrimination and equal employment, and sixteen sixty-two and forty-three sixty-two, anti-arrestment adoption.
I'll make a motion to approve adoption of the NOA policies fourteen twenty-two and forty-one twenty-two, discrimination and equal employment, and sixteen sixty-two and forty-three sixty-two, anti-arrestment adoption, as presented. Support.
Motion by Mrs. Florka, supported by Mrs. Babson. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. NOA policies two thousand through twenty-four thirty, program adoption.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the NOA policies two thousand through twenty-four thirty, program as presented.
Support. Motion by Mrs. O'Connor, supported by Mr. Parry. Any discussion? I just had some comments on twenty-four seventeen, comprehensive school health education. If I understand that correctly, are we to provide fifty hours of health ed pre-K through twelve? Is that how that?
Yeah, that's, that's what we're doing, there's a week. Um, I think it's actually two weeks now, but yes, that, that's being done at certain grade levels. We had, uh, fifth is a big push, seventh, ninth, and how they have it open now, in third grade also there, fourth grade. So they, they're meeting those hours in their buildings, so here to end, fourth, fifth, and then...
Okay, so that doesn't apply to each grade, the way I read it, that's what?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. Twenty-four thirty-one, I just wanted to highlight for Mr. Oak. It's a, it's a policy regarding managing heat and humidity, that the A.D. has to monitor that. And, uh, there's some specific guidelines on, on that, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
We have a, excuse me, we have a heel down there, Brad had it, and I got, Brad had it, and I got here.
That may just say it's very strictly on that, and they were sending constantly, you know, any time the weather approaches that.
Is that just for the kids, so that they're not, there's no, like, health issues in that?
I mean, and then Brad, I think my first year, he, he throws it like ten warning for Doug, right? So, yeah, he's on top of it. We have the heel down there, it's their mom.
Yes.
Um, what we've done, just the other day, I sent an email out, I think, just for some of the off-season stuff, you know. It, it really wasn't that bad, and the building, it can get a little hot, obviously. You know, we made, we say ten fifteen-minute breaks, five-minute breaks, water breaks. Um, you know, football, out there, they've always had this picket, you know, age pickets up there. Pat, last year, did a good job, I have no doubt in my mind, and Mark would follow the same premise with that. Andrew, I mean, Andrew's canceled practice, you know, so right across the board. Even at games outside, we're looking at, if it's close, we've had that, you know, the...
What is the limit?
I'm sorry?
What is the limit?
Ninety percent, I mean, you start getting around ninety percent.
The heat index is about one in four, it says.
Yeah, it, so we were at, like, we're in the nineties shutting down, so we're not even really challenging a hundred and four, if you ask me.
So does the measuring mechanism record that? Is it saying we should have to have a recording and writing and maintain for each school by the athletic director?
We have, I, I, I would be honest, I've never written it down. We have only notified through email that we just shut it down, but I don't do it a day, if that's what you're asking.
No, it's just saying, I think it's saying if you have to...
Oh, yeah, we do that, we follow the email.
Okay.
They said, they, the state sent us an email.
Okay.
To everybody, you know, saying, you, you know, any precautions, have you had any heat index issues? And I mean, it's tough to say no, when, you know, all the other schools have done, but I think we've been very...
But do we answer yes, or do we document yes, and then whatever the index was? Are you saying this needs to report the numbers?
It says, um, temperature and humidity readings are to be recorded in writing and maintained for each school by the athletic director.
That is only when you shut down her at all times, is that...
And this, this is very new policies, this is not something we follow in the past, so...
Oh, okay.
This is one we are adopting right now.
So we need to document, 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 that time, so we get all the...
Correct. I think if they're talking about when, maybe if you have the cancellation, or when you reach that threshold, that's when we... Correct.
Okay.
Just when we cancel, right, don't you tell me?
That's what it sounds like, but I...
Yeah. Well, that's what Brad is saying, and you don't have to separate that.
But it wants a recording as well, not just we cancel.
The number is one, yep.
And this is, I know it's athletics, but like, do we have the same precautions for band? Because I know they're all geared up right now.
That's true.
We would do it, anytime we get to that level, usually it's Drake, the one that goes out there with the, the, the counter, or that calculates, with humidity and everything else, and then we do across all.
Okay.
And I apologize, that policy was in the next section, but I covered it here anyway, so. Um, any further discussion on two thousand through twenty-four thirty? Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. O'Connor, supported by Mr. Parry, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we have the new policies, uh, twenty-four thirty through twenty-seven hundred, the first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of the NOA policy six, twenty-four thirty point one through twenty-seven hundred, as presented.
Support.
Motion by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mrs. Florka. Any discussion? Further discussion?
Twenty-four thirty-one point oh, it adds all, except for the, the last couple of words are, um, struck out. Are we getting rid of that one? It's the special programs by community volunteers.
What number was that?
Twenty-four thirty point oh one.
Yeah, we were, the whole thing is struck, we were not going to take any part of that.
Okay, that's what it looked like, there was just the couple at the end, they missed it.
Oh, and then it's straight out.
Um, and I had another question, because I wasn't sure. Uh, twenty-four sixty-four was a programs for gifted students. Um, and I think it, it didn't have anything selected when it talked about the criteria. So it said, we have, it applies to grades K through twelve, and it says gifted students shall be considered those who, through valid assessment, show one or more of the following abilities.
We were not taking any part of that. And then just, just everything down to the bottom. Um, so there would be guidelines that come through the NOA, when we adopt all our policies, we go through, and they give us guidelines for all of our policies. So we'll cover a little more detail back at that point.
Okay, so let's...
On recommendation from NOA, we'll straighten that.
Um, and then, one more, second, twenty-five seventy-five on, um, community service for the Michigan merit board. I may not just not know a lot of this one. But it's basically, um, providing opportunities for student performance, forty hours of community service during their four-year high school career, to meet one of the requirements for the Michigan merit board. Is that something we do?
It is, but I don't know that anybody goes for that anymore. This is, this is a Michigan civil law, so it's something that, they are telling us that we should have amended that policy as presented.
They already do, like, the community service, like, for the honor society.
Yeah.
They have to do that, they have to document that, and everything for the, for the honor society, so, I don't... So I mean, I mean, if they, if they break that up, they have to...
Yeah, maybe we should call the sides in.
Yeah. Let, let them know.
Might be available after something.
Sure.
One of the honor society.
That's true, that might want to go, go ahead, yeah.
I mean, that might want to go down there to report. Yeah.
Any further discussion? A motion by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mrs. Florka, approve the first reading of the NOA policies twenty-four thirty point one, twenty-seven hundred, as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're on a new business. Item A is the restraints on buses.
Uh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Kujia brought to us a, brought to me a conversation for Michigan transportation. And what it was, is discussion of how increased injuries for students under five on buses without restraints. Uh, so we started looking into it a little bit, originally thought it was a change in law, where it has not changed anything. I contacted Skip Barclay, he's our SET-SEG rep, our insurance carrier for transportation. He said nothing has been adopted for this at this time, so we do not need to adopt a motion or anything. We can continue doing as we are doing, transporting kids under five with fully covered, there's no changes, anything with that. Upon investigating some of the community right now, uh, it looks like Marysville does restraints in Yale. Uh, other than that, I did not hear from anybody else that was using restraints for children under the age of five. Uh, Mr. Kujia did investigate the number of students, right now, we do transport our GSRP students. Um, we have between seventeen and twenty-three of those students riding daily, depending on the parent transportation, different things. Um, and restraints are about two hundred and ten dollars apiece, so in order for us to do this, you know...
Is that lap belt, shoulder, or harness?
It's a harness, but it actually straps onto the seat, so it threads through between the seat cushion in the back and over the top, and it gives you that, that four-point harness, five-point harness. So they are, uh, like I said, two hundred and ten dollars apiece. It's not a mandatory, it's something that we could do, um, just to, we're adding up transportation as far as strapping the students and doing all that.
Who does the strapping?
The bus driver.
The bus driver, okay.
So, again...
If not optional, then obviously...
It is an option, so SET-SEG right now says we are fully covered with the way we are doing things, until that changes. It's just a recommendation to run Michigan transportation.
How long does it take that?
Uh, seventeen to twenty-three, we're, what we had last year, and we assume it's going to be the same.
But if Brad can't count it, it'll be evenly distributed on the buses.
And so, and that's what we have to do, we probably buy thirty, um, you know, so that the buses have a, a number that they need. The other thing is, uh, during the summer, we, daycare takes field trips, and most of those students, not most, probably a quarter of those students at goal would be under the age of five. So we could remove them from buses and add it all to one bus for the summer, so we have ten or whatever we need on the bus. So they are movable, um, they don't physically attach, just strapped.
Is this something that's actually, if things centered to the law?
Uh, SET-SEG has not had any discussion on it, so they've, they've investigated, Michigan Transportation, like I said, is the one that brought it to our attention. There is no, any discussion at the legislative level. There is no, any discussion at the legislative level on it right now. I don't know that it would change.
Mr. Mc, I was, our understanding at that, from Michigan, that the parent comes on and straps the child, and the bus driver just checks.
Okay.
That was our, that was what we were told, is that the parent comes on, straps somebody on.
And then the bus driver would take care of it on the way home?
No, we would, I don't, they didn't say that. They said the parent would get on, strap them in, and then the bus driver would check to make sure that it was properly.
And that's where I think that, you know, if we did go through restraints, we'd have to go through the training.
Sure.
And we'd go through probably a policy and figure out something.
Is there?
Thank you for the clarification.
Is there any grants?
Nothing that I've seen, but I cannot research it all yet, it's something we're in.
The court release is out again, it's not standard requirement or no or anything?
It is not.
I'm just curious for how, what, what data they're gonna, they're using, I'd say whether it's been required or not. Is it?
Is that country roads, or is it?
You know, I don't know.
Yeah. I think it's, yeah, just the keep, there's innocence of that growth in transportation. I think I, I would, I would love a little more research on how we do have to strap in and all that, and what kind of procedure we'd have for that, before we make the investment.
Okay.
But it sounds like, yeah, and if there's grants available, it sounds like a worthwhile thing to move forward with, in my opinion, but let's look into it a little bit more.
Yeah, the, the restraints are good for seven years, so we won't sum down, it's something we did, you know, a little last one at time there, so I will do that.
Anything further on that, for discussion? Okay, we'll move on to the board member training discussion.
That was me. So, I had mentioned before that I took the CBA one-on-one online, and it was pretty eye-opening to me, and I don't know if we can make it mandatory for an elected or appointed student to take the training, but I really wanted to have the discussion on how we can have us as board members continue to take the training, because it's important. I can't even tell you how eye-opening this fundamental school board service was to me, sitting in the audience and participating here. I think there's a lot of expectations of community members and individual board members that don't really understand what the technical board is, and it was incredibly helpful. So, I really just wanted to have that discussion of either, you know, we can't force people to want to take training, which I can kind of understand, if we could at least have some dialogue every so often on what training each member has taken, and, you know, what they got out of it. I know Dave brings it up when he goes, but we're going through a lot of changes, I think, and we're having a lot of new board members, we have a lot of new board members, and I don't think we can, we can, we'll have to learn as we go, but I think this accelerates the learning, and I think it's really important for our effectiveness, for when we take the training.
You know, we can have the, the state come out and do a training here, because then it becomes an open meeting, they would run the training, and, and the community that is here, or Channel Six is here for it, it'd be out there for everybody to be part of that. There is a cost to it, but.
Yeah.
It is something, instead of like you, if you've taken it online.
Yeah, and they don't offer all the classes online, that's what we were talking about earlier, and we've talked before, the locations aren't always feasible, so you really do have to pre-plan ahead, because you may be giving up on a day, or have to take a vacation day to do it, which I understand is not feasible for everyone. And when I look at the online offerings, they don't have the complete one-hundred series available online, so you would have to go places. Anything we could do to get everyone trained, I think would be fantastic.
Is the price any different from what they, if we get, because I mean, there's a lot of new members and stuff, so it's like.
So, when I called on the training for super, the superintendent evaluation, that was three seventy-five per person, but you have to guarantee five. So, I think that they would just, for the board rate, it'd be five times three seventy-five, fifteen, what else is? Fifteen seventy, eighteen seventy-five. So, I, I think that's what they would have done to do. You, like I said, we do have to do the superintendent evaluation training, we're going to have four new members that are going to need it.
Yeah.
It would be a long day, but you could piggyback three-hour super training and a three-hour training for all board members. So, you know, it would be, if you want to do one day where we can get through a couple, or we schedule a couple days where they come out.
Okay.
You'd rather see that? And I can contact them, I don't know if there's, she'd arrive, if a person's coming out, instead of making two trips, so.
And we could, we have an orientation policy for new board members, we could include it in there to encourage attendance of that class at, at least, so it's, I guess heightened awareness that, that exists. I don't know whether we can require it, but.
Right.
We can at least list it out in that policy one forty-two point seven orientation, that each board member is encouraged to attend the MAS B CBA one-on-one within six months. Could even look through and find the top five classes we want to do, as if we would sign individuals, and they can come back and do many teach. Not, wouldn't be as effective, but you could at least get our hands in with it for training.
What is our budget for each board member for education? I can't remember what it was, it's a five hundred, that's what comes to mind.
I think it's five hundred, but more than that, it's five fifty.
Five hundred.
Yeah. I think it's five.
Right.
Okay. All right, so you want to look into that?
Absolutely. I'll look at Supie Bell and CBA one-on-one.
And that would be then, we would be changing over, because MAS B is not the Supie Bell that we.
Oh, that's right, they are MAS A, that's, it would be two different people.
Yeah. Have you looked into their tool at all? MAS B version, is it much different?
I have not looked into it. Something I can, I know.
I thought you said before and said we couldn't switch at this, because we're bringing this.
We can't switch at this point, but we could consider it for the next.
And that was a different tool even. That was, that was a separate tool even, so there's MAS A, MAS B, I don't remember on the topic there, but out of the company, there's, I think Yale is currently MAS A, but they're considering switching over to MAS B.
Seems like the training is a little more readily available.
Yeah.
So, actions out of that discussion, I guess, we'll consider for the next meeting, or bring to vote for the next meeting, is that amendment to the one forty-two point seven orientation, and then you can report on action of the training. Anything further on the board member training? Right, compliance to policy twelve hundred?
So, my first question is, for school employees, does this policy apply to them, or is there a different policy or procedure?
An employee have a complaint against a fellow?
Again, yes, that's the first. It doesn't specify one or the other on this, but I was just curious, based on recent events, if we should handle those the same.
I think with the Neola, that it'll have is different than each one, because you have an administrative, you have a community, you have a staff one, but I, I don't know that. So, that's something I would look into, where.
Yeah, that's something I would like to understand, and then the other pieces is compliance to it. So, I had mentioned before, there's a lot of criteria before we get to hearings, and I understand the importance of the hearings when the people are requesting it, but I was concerned, a couple of meetings ago, when it mentioned there would be hearings plural, and there was a handful, not a handful, I don't know how many, there were some board members who seemed to know the circumstances of one, without all of us knowing. So, I, we've, we're working through some unique situations, and I want to make sure that we're adhering to this complaint policy twelve hundred, otherwise, we're going to be at an extreme disadvantage for whether it's holding people accountable, allowing them to work through the issues that are being brought to their attention. But I think, I think my concern was, are we following it? And if we're not, how do we make sure we're following it in the future? And then, how do we address, how do we make sure everyone at this table understands how to handle complaints? It's not by sitting at this table and bringing the complaint that was brought to you, because we all get blindsided that way, and we can't be effective as a board, or as an administration. So, I guess I just wanted to bring that up as a concern, is the compliance to that policy. Or maybe there's things that, you know, there's things that I didn't know, maybe I didn't know because I wasn't at that meeting, but to me, I feel like we missed a lot of steps.
How long is this twelve hundred policy even in effect? Because I know we've mentioned before that we're adopting the new policy.
So, you have to look through the thousands of Neola. We haven't seen that. We're through the five thousands, and there's nine thousand. So, I have not seen, I can, I'll dig it up and see where it, so we're going to amend, we won't amend this one, we'll amend the Neola one.
Yeah.
So, I'll, I'll dig it there.
We've done that before, we've pulled that from things, because.
Right.
That is correct.
Yeah, but it might be worth looking at that, pulling it out if it's better or more clear and all this stuff.
We have the five thousands that will be brought in notice, so we can make sure that that one is brought also.
Yeah, my interpretation of the twelve hundred policy, I don't think it's limited to the community. The community, you know, it's complaining against school personnel, whether it's a staff member, or a board member, or a student, a parent, whatever it may be, so I think it's all inclusive. So, you know, I don't, I don't think it limits against that at all. So, I would encourage, if, if there's a situation, you know, to, to follow the chain of command and follow this procedure, and bring it to us if it gets, you know, beyond, if they're not happy with the, the result, you know, when it gets to the final step with the superintendent, if it gets that, to that point. Any further discussion on policy twelve hundred? Okay, we'll move on to item D, which is the reports criteria.
This, again, just comes back to having sat through several meetings now, when it comes to the reports. I think, you know, we could ask you and or principals, athletic director, Adam, what we want to hear, but I think there's a lot of inconsistency in, in who's presenting what, or what the, what the material is that presented, and the length. So, I think it would be beneficial if, you know, they're coming to the meetings and taking the time to provide updates, that it's focused on student achievement and efforts that have happened in the last sixty days or the next sixty days upcoming, and kind of standardize that process or system across whoever's giving the update, so it's, it's fair and balanced, and, you know, we're not sending thirty seconds of elementary school.
So, that's everything. The conversation we have a little bit on it too, with the administrators, means that we supply the board reports to the board at an earlier time. I know you guys don't get them on Friday, but make sure everything is in there on Friday. If there's anything in there that you see, you can ask specifics regarding that.
Right.
But yes, we will talk about our five-minute length, focusing on this. And that's, you know, the, the administrator, the high school and the elementary principals have really tried to change their presentations to, you know, what's going on to, you know, instructional things that are going on, and that's what they've been doing with that caliber, so we can do that with everybody.
And I think it'll help, I mean, I know we kind of got sidetracked with the workshops, because we've had to have multiple meetings every month, but as we continue to refine how the vision is and what the expectations are, they should get better, but just wanted to bring that up.
What do we think, five minutes?
I, and I, I think if it's something critical, like, you know, I'm, whatever it may be, that we should break out as a separate line in the agenda, and then we'll give it its due time. That way, it's, it's highly visible to the community too, what we're talking about on the agenda, rather than just seeing a report. Okay, anything further on the reports criteria?
That's it, thank you for letting me have those.
All right, and we have I M E, amended I M to accept the resignation of Mrs. Florka from the School Board of Education. When I'll make the motion.
Because I'll anger hopefully.
I'll make the motion, or I move to approve the resignation.
With regret.
With regret, of Mrs. Florka from the School Board of Education.
Support. And it's as of this meeting?
Yep, as of the close of this meeting.
Okay.
Cheryl, once again, about, you know, I appreciated your wisdom you brought to the board.
Yes.
You always ask great questions.
Yes.
It's for a great discussion. Been on the board since two thousand and seven, so a long-standing board member, and we're certainly going to miss you. So, we'll have to post that opening then tomorrow, hopefully, or as soon as possible, and we'll have thirty days to fill that, which I believe puts us at about eight twenty-one, which is ahead of our eight twenty-six meetings, so we'll have to call a special meeting for interviews.
That is correct. Cheryl's been part of the Athletic Committee, VSIT, been with me as I've moved up in all the different ranks, so I've been working with her since, since oh seven, where we started the Athletic Committee, and going through the review of our handbook, creating a coach's handbook, and moving on, so I appreciate everything that you've helped me grow as well, and your advice here has been a blessing for all of us, so thank you.
And I just want to encourage everybody. In addition to that, I've done Little League umpiring, I've coached teams, I've done soccer, I taught catechism. It's for your community, and, and I, I am comfortable that there's a whole audience of parents, some are here this evening, that are more than capable of filling this position. It's rewarding, it's aggravating. We love the people, this meeting, maybe not the next, but I encourage everybody, I mean, it's been a long, great journey. My journey's going different, and I'm continuing with my community service in a different way. I don't regret one minute with you guys, and I know we've had differences and all, but it's been incredible. So, I do encourage anybody that just has that pull to, you know, step up and try it, or keep coming to the meetings and seeing if it's not something that's, that's calling to you to be able to do. So, thank you. No, but we are fostering, that was our latest communities, so there's a contribution. No, but we are fostering, that was our latest communities, so if there's a contribution you guys can formulate to that, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Yep, um, we have motion by itself, supported by Mrs. McHugh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, um. Move on to the hearing then. Complaints against administrative, administration?
Request closed session, please.
Requested closed session. Okay, what, take a roll call? I'll make a motion to go into closed session at eight thirty-nine, eight thirty-one.
Support. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mr. Coe? Mrs. Florka?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobsey?
Yes.
Okay. We'll hold a closed session then. Yes.